So the request you have in front of you is to replace the main entryway doors here at the SAU office, the three exterior doors. They're essentially 20, 24 years old. The wind has caught them too many times. They're torn right off the hinges. This request would replace them with the same doors that we have at the high school gym end, which have been bulletproof, very rugged, will last a lifetime. So the request is for granite state glass for $24,980 with a $1,700 miscellaneous part in there to patchwork in the flooring when they're done. Brings the total to $26,680. They are an insulated unit and it also includes the two of the door, the double door unit that's in the hallway at the SAU, which is in a similar condition as the three exterior ones here.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gross? Jim?
Did you get competitive bids on this?
No, I did not. It's not an easy thing to find, especially with New Hampshire contractors. Granite state get glass has essentially bought most of the people up.
Any questions from the public? All right, on to the second one. The refrigeration unit.
Yeah, as I noted, the state of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services does periodic inspections of all of our kitchens as we serve food. Their most recent inspection had them walk into the walk-in refrigerator at the high school and note that the floor is corroded and the racks that they have in there are also fairly well corroded. I'd note that they're all original with the last renovation at the high school, which would have been in 2002, I believe. So what this, we've done this work before at Great Brook Middle School. So what we did is we proposed putting aluminum diamond plate on the floor and repurchasing chrome coated shelving. The total's $5,669 for that.
Jim?
Same one. Same question.
No, we went right to the vendor that we did, that did Great Brook for us.
Any others? Okay, the last one.
Hancock Elementary School playground fence. Recently, thanks to Jessica, renovated, completely renovated and replaced the playground at Hancock Elementary School. It was done through the Daniels Trust, which is a trust that's specific to the school and the children of Hancock Elementary. We purposely left, the playground is fenced in on three sides. As part of this infancy stages, we had said it would be great to put a fence along the front of it and actually have it so that there would be an area to keep students in check on the playground. So we did that, the playground's installed, they've been utilizing it. Now we know where we're going to put gates and, and access gates and, and gates that we could drive the tractors through when we're doing engineered wood fiber, the protective coatings on the floor. So this price is for $7,295.48 to reskin the entire fence around the perimeter and install the new fence across the front.
Okay, questions for Mr. Gross? All right, as usual, we have to keep the public hearing open for half an hour. So we will skip right to beginning the board meeting. If you would all stand and join me in the pledge.
I certify that the manifest listed below totaling $4,103,000 have been reviewed by me and found to be proper charges against Kentucky Valley School District for goods and services received and have properly been processed prior to their submission to the school board.
Okay, if I have a motion to accept that?
I move to approve the manifest.
Second?
Okay, any questions about the manifest? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Mike, if I can make a comment?
Yes.
For the sake of, some people may have heard this, some may have not heard, but for the sake of everybody's information, those manifests are reviewed, every, I mean, to every manifest reviewed by both myself and Jim Kingston.
Public comment. Is there any members of the public would like to speak to the board? If not, we'll, we'll start with Policy Committee and Janine.
Okay, first I'll do the meeting we had on Tuesday, June 24th. And that we discussed policy JFAB admission and tuition of non-resident students. And that is actually here for a second read tonight. And it includes the feedback we received during the June 3rd, 2025 school board meeting. And we have policy JLP parental notification of and involvement in student welfare. It's up for a second read tonight and it also includes the feedback we received during the June 3rd school board meeting. And we have, okay, so at the meeting, we also, we also took a very quick look at the summary of the copies NHSBA put out, their spring update, both in red line for, red line and summary. And I believe that you all got the summary in your folders. And that was, and then memorialization policy is going to be, is sent back to administration and they will be looking at it this summer and discussing it and looking at collecting more feedback from different people like parents and teachers and students in order to come up with a, a different policy for us, or not necessarily different, but a new policy for us to take a look at. So the memorializing, memorialization policy is under review right now by the high school administration. So then that brings us up to tonight, we met briefly, and we have a policy, policy EAG, use of private vehicles to transport students and for other school purposes. We did get the feedback from Primex and our legal team. And this copy right now that our superintendent handed out is for a first read. We wanted to get this done quickly because it is something that needs to go into the handbooks, which are being prepared right now. So we'd really appreciate it if everybody took a close look at it and send any questions or feedbacks you, feedbacks, feedback you have to either Dr. Forrest or myself or any other member of the policy committee.
It, this policy is not going into handbooks, but it is, there is going to be a change in practice related to students self-transporting. So we wanted to make sure it got approved so that communication can go out to high school students that this would impact.
Okay. If you've all been following in the news, obviously, this year we have had an incredible amount of bills that have passed through the state legislature. And so a lot of them mandate that the school institute certain policies. So we're beginning that process and I'm sure the policy committee is going to be really busy trying to get all the things that have been changed and, you know, up to date in our policy. Okay, Communication Committee?
The Communications Committee met on Tuesday, July 1st. We began by discussing June's Fair Funding Community Forum. The event was very well attended with over 120 people filling the theater and another 150 having watched online. For some context, at our budget forum last winter, we had just over 40 members of the public in attendance. We discussed the outreach strategies used for this forum as several of them were new to us. The Fair Funding Project had taken it, the initiative on advert, on the advertising front and utilized paid Facebook ads at a relatively low cost of 47 cents a click. Their ad reached over 3,700 people with the average person seeing that ad three times at a total cost of around $90. They also utilized road signs in high traffic areas throughout the district. And both of these strategies stood out as highly cost-effective announcements that I believe we should employ for future forums. There will be times when physical mailers will be necessary, of course, but these methods can be used either in conjunction with or as leading methods of, for future community During our board goals session, I discussed that the Communications Committee would begin focusing on district-wide branding alignment. During this communications meeting, we reviewed a presentation that outlined the district's current usage of graphics across media signage, uniform, uniforms and written communications. We discussed why a coherent and consistent brand identity is vital to ConVal and we began work to create recommendations around establishing branding guidelines, practices and policy. We'll be looking forward to bringing this presentation to the board during our next board goal session. We have also begun discussing our next community forum as we're, all of us are aware and I'm sure the community is now being made aware that the governor and legislature, the legislature has passed and the governor has signed into law a bell-to-bell cellphone ban. We are fortunate that our superintendent and a team in the high school have had the foresight to have been thinking about how to implement policy and start to communicate this with us and with staff and students. But we feel that a forum before the new school year begins could be a very good opportunity to help this roll out smoothly and to not only inform the district of the policy that we've, are coming to adopt by law, but to get some feedback as well. So I don't know if we have a firm date on when that will be, but it will be soon. Have we, the 13th? Okay. Well, that's what we talked about, but I wasn't sure if everybody had signed off on that. So we'll be looking to do it on August 13th at 7:00 PM in the Lucy Herlin Theater. That should be in between policy reads. I'm very much looking forward to the presentation we'll hear tonight on this topic. It's a short turnaround, but I would invite the community in the meantime to email questions ahead of the forum, again to forum@conval.edu. And we'll have another update. Right, I think we're going to be meeting about this again on the, I think, next week as a Communications Committee and we'll have more updates at the next board meeting. Past that, there are two communications that the committee is putting forward this evening. The first is a withdraw study communication that is intended for publication on the district's website. This is an announcement that the withdrawal study committee is actively working on Francis Town's withdrawal study. It's basically a carbon copy of the Temple announcement we had approved months ago. It's just updated for the timeline that's specific to the Francis Town. So if, I believe that was in the packets and emailed to everybody, if I could have a motion to, or I could, I'll make a motion to approve the statement.
Wait a second.
A second, yeah.
Questions for Curtis? All right, all those in favor of accepting that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay, great, thanks. The second statement the committee is putting forward is intended to be a board statement on the outcome of the ConVal v. State base adequacy lawsuit. That was also in the packets, so I will make a motion to approve the statement. As it was revised, there was a minor change, so the revised copy is on the, that was physi, it was physically put in your packets and there was a, a must add it before a B.
I will second that motion.
Okay.
But I do have a question.
All right, go ahead.
So, well, I think it's a good news statement in your, in your communique. I think it may be a too-good news statement in your communique. You do note that the Supreme Court did not require the state to implement the increase immediately, nor did they mandate how that funding was to be raised. And all the words I'm hearing aren't positive, that it may come down to an increase in the swept funding, which means it's still going to fall on the backs of the local taxpayer to pay that burden. So I'm, I'm, I get it. I'm, I, I want us to be happy about the judgment that was reached, but you take that judgment in conjunction with the Rand judgment and I'm worried that this expectation from the public that somehow we're all going to see our tax bills go down is, is a false hope.
I was going to say something very similar. I think that the coverage in the press has been very positive and suit was won, but it came out with a result that is very unclear as to what it implies for schools' funding or for property taxes. There are a lot of possibilities that result in almost nothing happening. And I would expect, in fact, one of those would be very appealing to the legislature. So I would say it would be nice to have at least somewhere in here to cover us when it turns out people are disappointed in the result.
Right.
Go ahead.
I, I think part of the concern is that we're hearing one side say that they don't believe that the judicial branch has the authority to impose the limit, therefore that they may not need listen. And the Supreme Court expressly ruled that their interpretation of the trial court's decision did not violate the separation of powers, that they do indeed have the authority to declare that base adequacy as, as they expressly examined and defined it, not as some have thought to reconstitute it, to solve the puzzle of where the funding comes from, but they found that it was unconstitutional as the funding system currently exists. I think we need to communicate the ruling. I don't believe that I overstated it, nor do I believe that this Supreme Court overstated it.
I, I would agree with Curtis. We got it, we got a decision from the New Hampshire Supreme Court about the funding formula in New Hampshire about the schools and the fact that the governor and the legislature don't like it. And there's other ideas out there about how it might not be as, as good as we hope, we're hoping for, doesn't really impact that decision. We have to, I mean, the legislature does make that decision and we have to wait and see. And the legislature depends on who we elect. So I think that we have to, we have to wait and see and I do think, and I don't think that the statement was, you know, oh yay, you know, it's time to dance around the mulberry bush. I think it was pretty, this was a good decision, we're really happy with the decision and it does rest on, you know, the perspective that we can clearly see. And we'll have to see how that plays out and keep on insisting on what we believe is fair and just.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thrilled with the decision as well. I'm just not sure that the, the impact of the decision, as you said, is going to result, is going to come out of what the legislature does and how they choose to resolve that. And it may not result in the big savings that we're all imagining when we see this Supreme Court resolution. I think it's, I think a simple addition of a statement that how that funding is resolved remains in the hands of, of the legislature, not just when, but how, is still something that is out there, right? And, and our, how it's, when and how it's going to be resolved and what the eventual tax impact will be on the local taxpayer is something that remains to be seen.
And I think the other thing is that the timing of it, we're talking about the fact that it came out just after the state legislature passed their two-year funding bill. So that it obviously, any increase in funding, other than what was already in the budget that they passed, would have to be found some other place. So again, that's something to watch also. Let's do Jim first.
I think the idea of adding a clause that says the where and when and the how is, is not certain and to keep pressure on taxpayers would be appropriate, short, sweet. Not, not taxpayers, I mean legislators.
That's no different than the first four decisions. I mean, it was the same, the, the first four decisions had the same problem. It had to go back to the legislature to decide to do something. Some of the sessions, the legislative sessions after that did, did work on it and come up with some action and we did see some change, but I, it's the same with this. The difference in this decision is that there's a specific amount attached to it and that is new. A, a specific base amount.
So you're endorsing my, his idea or not?
To, to say that it's up to the legislature?
Yeah.
I think it's obvious, but sure.
I think it does say that. I'm not, I'm not sure how that's, how that, how that's missed or how it's serving the interest of-
You have to look for reading to understand it, I think. The, the average person wouldn't, that wouldn't pop out of the page if it was two pieces together. I agree a little, adding a sentence or two shouldn't take much time. But that's how I-
I mean, the decision did say that the legislature will fund, will, will fund education up to this amount. It didn't say. Right. Yeah, I mean, we can go through, back and forth through this all night, but I think, again, that it's a matter of waiting and seeing what is going to come about from the legislature, so.
I don't disagree with Jim, but I think for us to try to predict what the legislature's going to do is impossible. We don't know. And I think what this says is what's happening today and I think we should leave it at that.
I disagree. I think we should temper our enthusiasm. I mean, we, plain and simple, we don't know. And I think it's, if you didn't understand it, I think it implies that it's going to happen next week.
Curtis?
While the Supreme Court upheld the need to increase base adequacy funding, it did not require the state to implement the increase immediately. Instead, a majority of justices chose to give the legislature and executive branch the opportunity to resolve the issue promptly. That's the sentence for anyone watching that is in question and the, the place where some people are looking to expand on our explanation of what's happening. I'll just say, I, I could continue communicating about this topic and I will, till the cows come home. So, yeah, happy to write another article next week, but-
Again, I don't, I don't want to, I'm certainly not re-legislating this or retrying this and I'm happy with the outcome, but I think we need to temper expectations of the taxpayers on what that outcome really means at this point until the legislature makes a decision.
I would argue that we don't need to temper, we need to fan the flames of their expectations to let them know that what this adjustment to base adequacy represents is actually a 15% reduction in any one of our town's assessments. That is something that they should know, that, that the exact scope, and what I didn't spend two paragraphs explaining, was the exact scope of the Supreme Court's intentions in reducing the effects of property taxes. So, no, I, I don't just want to tell people, nothing to see here, don't pay attention. We want, and I'll, I'll, I'll write another one when they come back to show us what our attorney fees are, are going to come back at.
I will add that we did have a conversation with the three attorneys that were responsible for the lawsuit and a lot of the information and the wording that you see there did come from those attorneys as far as things that we should share with people, so.
And New Hamp, oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was my turn. There's a webinar that you can sign up for tomorrow night, New Hampshire Fair Funding, at six o'clock, that actually are attorneys, that Elizabeth Ewing and Michael Tierney, who argued the case right through all the, all the steps, will be on that webinar. So if people want more information about that lawsuit, that's a really good opportunity.
Kyle?
We are seeing in the public media a promise that this will reduce property taxes. I, I have clippings here I can show you. This statement is not, but the caveat that you just put in there was about when some action is taken, not what action- not what action is taken. This whole action is not about improving education. It's about who pays for it. The amount of money available to education may not be affected whatsoever. Whether it comes out of property taxes or not is completely unknown. And so I think that given that the message is out there that property taxes will go down in some way as a result of this, we need to be very careful to say it is unclear what the impact is going to be on property taxes.
Yes?
So I'm reading this over and I'm hearing several people mention that it sets up this false expectation. And the only way I see that, and I'm happy to be pointed to other places where it may say it, the last sentence of the third paragraph. "The court's decision moves us closer to a system where the state, not local taxpayers, meet its constitutional responsibility to fund public education." So if we took out not local taxpayers, if we said the court's decision moves us closer to a system where the state meets its constitutional responsibility to fund public education. Other than that spot, I don't see where in this document we are giving people false hope or giving people the expectation that their property taxes will go down. But I could, maybe other people are reading it and seeing something I'm not.
Okay. At this point, we have a motion on the floor to accept this as a document. So if there's nothing else, then we will vote on that motion, please. So all those in favor of accepting the statement that Curtis has written, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's do a show of hands, please. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed?
Okay, and the countless. Okay.
No, there's eleven. Yeah. It was-
No one abst-
No.
All right, hold on, please. Let's, there are more people here than that.
All right, again, if you're in favor of the statement, please raise your hand and hold it there. Four, five, six, six. Against. Please raise your hand if you're against. Five. The statement passes six to five. Thank you. All right, at this point in time, we've gone by the amount for the public hearing. So let's go back and look at the replacement doors. Can I have a motion to accept the 26,680 for replacement doors? Any other? Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the walk-in refrigeration, can I have a motion for the 5,669? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? And finally, for the Hancock Playground, 7,295 and 48 cents. Can I have a motion, please? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain, personal relationship.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Curtis, you're still on.
Okay, I'm still on, but I'm not on communications. Selectmen's Advisory Committee. SAC met on June 26th. We reviewed graduation and Conval's summer academic activities. Our school board updated, focused on an overview of our board goals discussion. Jim Fredrickson updated the committee on budget and properties work and upcoming initiatives. Jim also distributed charts showing updated district apportionment figures and estimated town payment schedules. Our hour concluded with an open-ended conversation around the challenges of engaging our communities in the work that we do as school boards and select boards. That's it for SAC.
Okay. Withdrawal committee.
Okay. The withdrawal study committee met on June 26th following SAC. Our meeting was rather brief. We got an update from Temple regarding their scheduling of a special town meeting to hold a vote to rescind their withdrawal petition. I'm presently unsure where this stands, if you have an update, Jim?
I can give you an update.
Thanks.
Soon, okay. I went to the select board meeting a week ago tonight and made an argument that they should go ahead and hold a special town meeting to rescind that warrant. They are, they were thinking that they were going to be too late in the year for it to be effective. However, they are going back and revisiting it with their attorney due to all the conflicting opinions about when, how much they done, what has to be done and whether, what day of the week you have to hold your tongue just right on in order to make a special meeting happen. And I think that, I think the temperament of the group now is to, is to attempt to get a special meeting held to withdraw petition. But whether that will happen, I can't tell you at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with, with that in mind as well, in the meantime, the withdrawal study committee will press on with the work of considering feasibility and suitability of Temple withdrawing from the district. And we will continue to ask the SAU to do the work to uncover the financial ramifications of said withdrawal. So we're still on track. The committee, secondarily, in the study meeting, the committee was informed that a procedural defect had occurred in Francis Town's holding of their special town meeting. Francis Town did not hold a meeting of their supervisors of the checklist prior to their special meeting as required by law. Representatives of Francis Town were informed of their error and made aware that the period to challenge such a defect was five years, lest the town take curative measures. The committee itself will not be stalling proceedings in light of this error. We respect the vote taken by the Francis Town residents at their meeting. Following that, the committee will be creating, we discussed creating a financial subcommittee, which will be having a meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM to begin reviewing the financial aspects of withdrawal. And we will be front-running conversations for the full committee that will begin in financial conversations that will begin in earnest at our next withdrawal study meeting. Before we wrapped, we presented an outline of the state's Ed 306 rules governing the requirements for public school education. The full Ed 306 requirements were emailed to the committee prior to the last meeting. And that does it.
I understand that we were not in non-compliance and the RSA requires that for elections, but not meetings. Is that true or not?
As it was described to us and as I read it too in the RSA, it is required for special town meetings. Yes. Yes, the-
All right, let's move on while he's, go ahead.
Remind me of the name of your town administrator. Thanks.
You can find that and get it to him, okay?
Okay, I have it right here. That would be RSA's 6669 five, six fifty-four, colon, twenty-five through six fifty-four, colon, thirty-one. RSA thirty-nine, colon, one dash C and RSA forty-
Those are all the ones that say for elections, not for meetings.
They, and RSA forty- Colon, four, dash, F. And they refer back and forth as to special meetings and where in special meeting, what portion of, why a special meeting is also held to the similar standings, standards.
That's in conflict with our lawyer's opinion.
Okay, any other questions for Curtis? All right, moving on to Jim.
We had a lot on our agenda today. We didn't get a chance to cover it all. We got cut short. Some people left, but we basically have a lot in our plate right now. We talked about what our operating, what our operating rhythm would be and how we can get some focus on some of the stuff we need to get done yesterday. I'm not going to go through all that discussion in detail. But what we will, next month, we'll be talking about the budget guidance. And the budget guidance, I think, is going to need to control some, include some more details we've included in the past. We talked about having a deep dive and the first deep dive we're going to take across would be the transportation issue that contractors up. We didn't get the full group, didn't hear the discussion on CTE, but Jen Riley gave us an update on the state's funding of CTEs. It's unclear what they're going to do. There's still a possibility that they could move forward with the way they did it last, the way we talked about it last time. Last year, when we decided not to put the bond in. So we're going to have to make a decision in terms of whether we want to take another shot putting a request in the state and do by January 1st. And I, we can't have the discussion here. We can't, couldn't have it earlier. But we're going to have to have a board discussion very quickly to decide if we want to even consider putting something in the state in January 1st, which could require a bond. We talked in terms of, should we set up a building committee to help move some of this forward again? We never got to talk about the SMS and GBS condition, all the work. We've got all the work that needs to be done. The committee has a lot of work to do. So what we decided to do, Dan and Mike, is probably have maybe two budget property committees that meet until we get to the next couple of months or so, to a month. Now, the good news that came out of this is we talked, Curtis talked before about what I shared with the Selectmen Advisory Committee about the apportionment of the fiscal year '26 budget, which will hit the tax bill in December. And Neil was, gave us some good news today. Good news from the standpoint of that the amount of money returned would be substantially more than the $500,000 in the budget. I think they wanted to give you a number now, but we should have that number. I think we'll have the discussion on how much to retain, how much to return. Formal discussion, board approval sometime in August, either the first or second board meeting in August. And we'll give you all the historical information and all the background before that meeting.
Okay, thank you. At this point in time, we have a couple of presentations. And so we're going to flip the consent agenda and the superintendent's report. So we'll be going down to the superintendent's report.
And within that, if it's okay, we'll go right to the presentation since we have so many people in the back. You're welcome to stay after you present, but just in case you need to get home. I know some of you have a long drive. Our first presentation is Jessica, from Jessica Vizina, who is our principal at Hancock Elementary School. She is also one of our instructional coaches. During the budget season last fall, we talked about that as a district, we are committed to keeping our smaller elementary schools open. And so we need to look at models that are sustainable for our community. So one of the things I asked Jessica to really dive into this year and start researching is multi-grade, a multi-grade model. So she did that. She has put together a presentation and I will call it up and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. So while Dr. Forrest is bringing that up on the board for you. So like she said, I am the principal at Hancock Elementary and also an instructional coach. And last year was my, my first year having to deal with having multi-grade classrooms. I had never had to deal with that before. So I'd already started really researching and looking at what might be best practices. We had to combine our kindergarten and first grade together. And then we also came up with another model to take some of our first graders and put them with the second graders. So it's been a while really digging deep and researching. What are the best practices and models for multi-grade classrooms? You can go to the next one. So I'm going to talk about a few things. The biggest item that I want to discuss is the key differences between multi-age and multi-grade classrooms. They are not interchangeable. They are not the same thing. So we're going to go through the differences. We want to make sure that everyone has the same terminology and understands that. I'm going to go through some effective teaching models that come straight from research. All of these things that I'm going to discuss tonight all come from research. We're going to look at a few strategies for implementing instructional programs in multi-grade classrooms. And then we're going to talk about what the administrative team at the elementary level is doing now over the summer and what our instructional planning looks like. Okay, so multi-age and multi-grade. What is it? So multi-age, we're looking at mixed ages and abilities in the classroom. Multi-grade is all grade-based groups in one classroom. How are they grouped? Multi-age is more developmental and not by grade, as it is in multi-grade. How long do the kids stay? In multi-grade, usually they'll have, for example, if they're in a one-two classroom, they'll have a teacher for that grade and then they'll go to the next three-four teacher. While a lot of times in multi-age, they have the same teacher for a few years. They'll loop with them. The teacher's role in multi-grade is where they're balancing teaching two or more grade levels at once, while the teacher's role in multi-age is more, again, developmental, looking at a range of their abilities. So how is their progress tracked? When we look at multi-grade, and we're going to talk about this in more depth next, is based on standards and expectations. And where do you usually see these? So multi-grade is what you're going to see in smaller schools like we have right now or in rural areas. Multi-age is more Montessori or alternative schools. And this is why, we can go to the next one. So multi-age in a standards-based system. So right now in public school systems, we are driven by grade level standards and accountability mandates from the state. We're expected to have teachers assess, report student progress, which contrasts what a multi-age instruction would look like. So we also, with multi-grade, we have a certain curricular approach that we need to use that aligns with grade level expectations. Multi-age does not have that. So we have to, in a public school system with a multi-grade, we have to ensure compliance with our grade level expectations, benchmarks, pacing guide, those types of things. Okay. So what does this mean? There are strengths from the multi-age model that we can incorporate into multi-grade instruction. There are many instructional strategies that we can incorporate, that we're actually incorporating already. It's just putting a name to what is happening. So for example, flexible grouping by skill or need. This is one of the strengths of multi-grade. We can do that. We can have targeted instruction that is still tied to grade level standards, and we do that now already. You can have peer collaboration and leadership. This is one of the strengths of multi-age grouping. We can also do that in multi-grade instruction. Again, this is also already happening in many of our classrooms. A couple of others that are happening right now are rotations or center-based models. Again, those are things where the teachers can be working with a small group while other students are working independently on other items. Planning across grade spans. So when we're looking at multi-grade, we can have teachers collaborate with each other and having horizontal and also vertical alignment in our curriculum. Okay. I'm going to go over four different types of teaching models, and the elementary principals, we have gone over all of these models very carefully to see what might work in our individual schools because our schools are different. So the first model is having grade-specific, where the teacher rotates between grade-level groups. So for example, in a second and third grade classroom, the teacher's going to work with second graders on a phonics lesson, while the third graders are going to do independent centers, and then they switch. And those centers are designed to review prior learning. This is also something that we do currently because we have multiple abilities already in our classroom. With this model, the teacher still will teach all subjects. Go ahead. All right. The combined blended model is where the teacher's teaching grade-specific skills separately by grade, for example, math. So they may have first grade and second grade teach math separately because it is a subject where the foundational skills are a little bit different for each grade. But then later in the day, they'll combine all of the students working together, doing writing or a science project, something like that. Again, teachers are teaching all of the subjects in their classroom. The third one is a content specialization. So instead of one teacher teaching all of the subjects to their multi-grade group, they're going to specialize by content area. So for example, if teacher A is teaching math in small leveled groups, teacher B could be teaching literacy. Again, these, this model will still have students in different grade levels mixed together, but it can also be grouped by skills. And then they'll rotate between the teachers and different subjects. The last one is a hybrid departmentalized multi-grade model. This is actually the model that Hancock Elementary will be using as we start up in the fall. So teachers are partially specialized. So one teacher is going to teach a grade, a combined grade group, and then the other teaches a single grade that's focused on a certain content area. So for example, one of my teachers is going to teach grades two and three together in flexible small groups with literacy, while the other teacher is teaching math to a grade, a specific grade level. And it's very focused and standard-based. It really provides more flexibility to groups while giving support. Math is high stakes. It's a content-heavy area to be instructing at, at this age level and grade level. So this is the model that we're actually going to be using in the fall. It gives us a little bit more flexibility to meet kids' needs. What will also happen with this is this, the teachers will also be having science, social studies, their intervention block. Those will be multi-grade. Okay, next one. So there are, of course, with anything that we are implementing, there comes challenges. When we're looking at multi-grade models, time management is one. Some teachers have not had training on how to teach multiple grades at one time. There have also been issues with classroom management, and how do you manage a diverse group of students that has different needs and attention spans? We do that already. Our teachers do a great job with classroom management. They're already working with diverse groups. And then with the curriculum, so adopting curriculum and instructional materials, again, that meet those varied academic needs, and then developmental stages that happen across grade levels. So those are some of the things that administrators are really keeping in mind and how we can support teachers as we start to move towards more of the multi-grade instructional models. Okay, this is a lot on this slide. There have been questions about what do you do now where you are implementing a curriculum program, and it's meant to be taught just a third grade or just a fourth grade, and now you have classrooms combined? Well, illustrative math is our math program that we are implementing this year, and there's actually many strategies that we can incorporate using any type of program that we use in the district. So these are some of the examples. Again, you'll see a lot of them that I've already discussed, the flexible grouping pieces, rotational models, how we use data to drive our instruction, and some of those other models where we have content specializations. So there are ways that we are working through incorporating these strategies when we have multiple grades in the same classroom. Okay, so what are we doing to support this work? So administrators, we've already gone through and chose appropriate teaching models for each classroom. Many of us before school ended worked with our staff to come up with the best model for our individual schools. We have built our daily schedules that support the model that we are implementing. We are working on removing any of those potential barriers for teachers. So for example, time and resource, that's always one. At HES, for example, we've been able to schedule additional planning time for teachers. So that, that's one of the positives that is coming out of this. Then the big one right now is providing time and space for teachers to do the following. This is our summer work. So teachers are coming together, and we're working on what are our routines and expectations as kids travel between or are in a multi-grade classroom? What will our flexible groupings look like? What are the common classroom norms, any visuals or systems? And then we're all looking right now to create a trimester one curriculum plan that's aligned to multi-grade needs. So my teachers actually got together on Monday, and we're getting together again on Friday, and we've already started to come up with what are the routines, the expectations, the norms, since our students are going to be traveling between two different teachers. What we are also doing is incorporating multi-grade best practices in each of our school goals. So when Dr. Forrest or we present on our school goals, you will see that that's, we're making sure that we incorporate those best practices and instructional strategies into our, our goals for the school year. And then if you are interested, I did put the references on there. Any questions?
Any questions? Yes.
Nice job, Jessica. That was very helpful. I see in some schools, classes are being divided in half. Is that based on developmental level?
Yes and no. It depends on what the model is. So for example, at Hancock, we're splitting our third grade in half. It's so we have, if you think of kind of middle school, we have a homeroom model where our students, there's a 2-3 group and a 3-4, and that's more to even off the numbers for when they go to specials or when they're having their science and social studies group. So it's not, not necessarily based on skill level. It's more to balance the numbers for those other areas.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes.
So I, I was a little confused about the math because it, it sounded like with the hybrid system, the math was going to be taught just one subject at, at a time, not two different. But then you, you talked about the, the math teacher trying to balance different instructional needs. So I just, is that different than what is already happening or?
So right now in a classroom that just has one grade level, for example, third grade, because the math, we have a math program that goes by grade level. So when we're teaching third grade, we're teaching the third grade curriculum. So math is one of the content areas where there's a lot of skills that spiral. So what we, in some of the models, some schools might not do it this way, but the content and the departmentalization model looks at taking kids just by that grade level, not combining, say, third and fourth graders together during math lessons, or in some models, even having third and fourth grade in the same classroom for math instruction. So for example, again, I can speak to the model that I'm using. When students have their math instruction, it will just be fourth graders in the room or just third graders. I hope that helps.
It does, because that's what I thought that, that system was. And so theoretically, a kid could have the same math teacher throughout his, his time at Hancock, let's say.
First, if we're this year, second, third, and fourth, yes, if they're a second grader, and we do that same model next year, then yes, they could have the same if we do this for the next three years, then yeah. Yep. Yep.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. I see a lot of advantages to the, to the multi-grade approach. Some schools, according to the spreadsheet, aren't adopting that. Would you be considering, even though the numbers aren't, aren't necessarily, doesn't require us to go that way in those schools? If we see advantages to this skill grouping and the, the instructional benefits in the smaller schools, would you be looking then to expand that, let's call it a pilot, to the, to the larger schools?
Luckily, that is not my decision.
We have, this is something that we've looked at before, and also more in, in the schools where we don't need to create multi-grades. There have been situations, which I've supported, where we've had teachers who have made the decision, you know, to be the math teacher, and another teacher takes on a different subject, so you have that content specialization. And given what teachers are expected to know and be able to do in their classroom these days, to be able to focus on just one or a couple of subject areas at the elementary has, has worked well. So at this, at this point, when people have asked to pursue it, the answer has been yes. And so we'll see how this goes, and if it's going well, then yes, we'd always want to adopt practices that are successful.
One of the thoughts behind Hancock with going with that hybrid model is our math teacher, who will be doing 2, 3, and 4, has already gone through the pilot for illustrative math. So she's more familiar with math, while the teacher that's doing literacy, she's gone through on really focusing on the program that we've been using. So we felt comfortable saying, let's be focused on either literacy and math and go in that route. Our K and 1, on the other hand, we are using one of our program paras to assist that teacher because that is a lot, K and 1 together. Those are two very different grade levels where we can have time where they're split, where the teacher can focus on kindergarten and the teacher can focus just on first grade.
Anyone else? I think as enrollment continues to change, we will have to keep looking at a lot of research-based techniques that we are utilizing to try to make sure that the students are getting the best education possible. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Jessica. So our next presenters are a group from the high school, and Curtis was nice to give me credit that I really didn't deserve. There's been a group at the, thank you, there's been a group at the high school that had, that had really started to look at cell phones. And actually, as, as the state legislatures were trying to decide whether or not they were going to move forward with this, and we were wondering if it was going to happen, this group had really put together a proposal because they were going to come to you with my support, asking you if the state didn't do it, to do a cellphone or personal device ban, bell to bell. So I had gone up to the high school, a large group, some of whom are here tonight, presented, and they just shared a lot of information about their thinking around cell phones, the impact they've had, and what, what a change would require. The, the law is not going to impact elementary and middle to the same degree that it is going to impact the high school, because the middle school has already really been, not that they don't have kids here, and they're breaking it every once in a while, but they have already, and they, the expectation is that cell phones are in backpacks and not brought out, but that's not the case at the high school, so this is going to be a major change. And so I just thought their thoughtful presentation would be helpful to all of you to just kind of get a glimpse into what they've been thinking about and the challenges they face and the challenges they kind of foresee as they move into this coming school year. So I'll turn it over to you. Just remember to make sure your mic is on, and you'll have to pass it, which, maybe, Tom, could we steal your microphone so they could have two back there? That would be... And if you all could just introduce yourselves for the board, that'd be great.
I'm Jess Madden. I teach graphic design at the high school.
Hi, I'm Ashley Mudrick, and I am the librarian and tech person at the high school.
I'm Tyler Mudrick. I'm a special education teacher at the high school. I co-teach in the English department, and I'm also the director of our adult diploma program.
Hi, I'm Sarah Grassi, and I'm the careers and education instructor at the high school.
Okay, so we're going to get started. Thank you, Dr. Forrest, for our introduction. As she mentioned, this is something that we've been thinking about for a couple of months now, so the law has kind of caught up with us. So this presentation is more... So this presentation is more just kind of our thoughts, our why behind this and why we all feel really passionate. Myself and our fellow librarian decided to do a book study back in the winter of the Anxious Generation. I'm not sure if you guys have heard of it. If you want to read it, we have some extra copies, so just let me know. And we opened it up to all staff. We met three times and we had about 20 staff members sign up, which for our book groups is pretty good. And after we finished reading that, some of us kind of felt this like moral obligation to do something. We didn't know if it would go anywhere, but we were like, we need to at least bring this up. Like, this is bothering us now, so we want to say something about it. We want to see where we can go. If you want to hop, oh, no, you're there. So as you know, we just added this today, but as you know, it is law now. So that kind of, it doesn't change our focus, but I feel like it backs it up. So today, we're going to go over our why. We did a staff survey, so we kind of wanted to share some of those results with you and then the next steps that we recommend.
Okay, we want to start with our why. So our research found that schools that prioritize relationships, play, and engagement create environments where students thrive. Phone use inhibits this growth. We learned that there has been a significant rise in mental health concerns since 2010, when social media became widely popular. Since then, there has been an increase in ADHD, anxiety, depression, and tic disorder diagnosis in adolescents. The chart that's there shows emergency department visits for self-harm for children between the ages of 10 and 14. So you can see that it's fairly level. Whoops. Oh, sorry, that one. Yep, you did go the right one. Yep. See how it's fairly level? And then it really drastically increases. Those numbers, just to give you an idea, were around 100,000, and then in 2010, they jumped, and then 2021, it went up to 634,000, emergency room visits for self-harm. So in the last 10 years, we've also seen that children are spending less time hanging out with each other. In this chart, it says kids spending time with each other. And it shows that children met with friends every day, and this has sharply declined since 2010. Again, it's sort of going up and down, but you see that gray mark. That's the 2010, and then it just plummets, where so students aren't hanging out with their friends every day anymore. So what do we know about the impact of smartphones and social media? So if you see those bullets, the first one is called MySpace. Some of you may remember that. In 2003, that came out. And then 2004, Facebook came. And I remember when we were like, which one's going to make it? Facebook looks like it won. So, okay, so you may be saying, well, why this 2010 thing? Well, so then we, so what's interesting is in 2007, the iPhone came out. And that is when 24/7 access happened. And then people were buying more and things, you know, they were becoming more popular. Instagram came out in 2010. So again, seeing that chart showing the decline. And we know that there's a positive correlation between the introduction of the smartphone and the development of photo and video sharing, social media platforms, and the decline in peer-to-peer interactions.
So the intent of this group was obviously to look at the negative impact cell phones had on students. And students are always our number one priority as a staff. However, our staff members are very important, too. So we thought it was enlightening to share some of the data from our staff survey. So approximately 50% of our staff filled out our survey, which is a pretty decent number for us up at the high school. 100% of the staff that responded to that survey had said cell phones impacted their students' attention, curiosity, interest in the everyday learning and environment of the classroom. Staff members believe that CONVEL did not at the time, as of the end of the school year, have an effective cellphone policy, keeping in mind that this original policy was written over 10 years ago, and there have been many technological advances and 85% of our staff respondents struggle with cellphone use of students on a daily basis, and 75% mentioned that they feel like the students are spending, excuse me, the staff is spending too much time policing cellphone usage in the classroom. And this one, for me, is one of the most enlightening ones. 84% of our staff respondents agreed that managing cellphone use has taken a large toll on their job satisfaction. And this here graph, we admit, is a little tricky to read. However, the question being asked, how many students in your class have a problem restraining their phone usage? The one number that you won't see up there is 0% of students. So the overall takeaway here from this graph is every student, teachers felt that every student that they see on a daily basis is having trouble with their cellphone use.
Okay, so our next steps in our recommendation was, before the law passed even, was that we went bell-to-bell cellphone-free for the 2025-26 school year. Our next slide, we, to define what bell-to-bell meant, phones will be stored in backpacks with students from 7:35 in the morning, when our first bell goes off, to 2:20, when the last bell of the day. The benefits of this would make it more consistent throughout the school of what is being implemented, that the expectation is we don't see your phone throughout the entire day. It would obviously eliminate distractions through the whole building. It would hopefully lessen the burden of teachers having to police this. It would be a policy that if we saw a phone, it would just immediately have a consistent reaction to that, rather than varying reactions depending on who was seeing it. We're hoping that would then reduce the strain between the teacher-student relationship. And then hopefully, that would create an optimal environment for developing an in-person social skills, too. So students aren't immediately reacting to their phone or retreating to their phone when they're in the cafeteria. They actually have a conversation with their peers. Challenges of this, this will be a big change, and we are very aware of that. We anticipate there's going to be some withdrawal and anxiety for our students, especially students who do retreat to their cell phones when they have moments alone. We know that there's going to be extensive planning and revisions for different scenarios and how we're going to react to things. Students are going to be unable to use their personal phones for things like planning after school, coordinating with parents and jobs and things like that. But cell phones are a newer invention. We have managed life before, so we feel that it is still possible. It'll just be an adjustment. And then when we put out our staff survey, 90% of our staff responded that they supported a bell-to-bell policy.
So at the high school, we have our CARES language, which corresponds with our MTSSB Tier One supports. So CARES is community, adaptability, respect, engagement, and safety. And as you can see, getting, having the phones removed from our classroom will take care of all of these things. Will foster an engaging community, creating norms and around technologies will require us to be adaptable. That's going to be tricky, but I'm confident that we'll be able to do it. Respectfully, we'll have a nice school-wide policy that will be followed with fidelity, and that will be great. Again, engagement will be increased, and we will also increase awareness of physical environment and reducing peer conflict during the school day, so safety will also be improved. Anecdotally, I wanted to share with you that my careers in education two students read The Anxious Generation as a book study this year. And at the start of the class, they all said, they did not feel that phones were really the problem, and they all strongly said they would not give up their phones. This was a long study. The book is deep, is a pretty complex book, and we started it after February break and read it through April. And so we would do it just one day a week and take a couple of chapters at a time and have some great discussion. By the end, unanimously, they all agreed phones need to be removed from our schools.
One thing that we do have going for us, as Dr. Forrest alluded to, is both of our middle schools currently have bell-to-bell policies. So any new student coming to our high school is used to that. That is the norm. So we would only have to break the habits of 75% of our students. And this was just, this was the presentation we gave to our staff. So we wanted to give them an opportunity to ask questions, to come up with some of those what-if scenarios. We also linked a Google form for them, and our administrators have been, and anyone else who's been able to help kind of start working on this and start thinking through everything, they've been able to kind of have the input of our peers without them being there. So we wanted the forum to be open, so our staff members could kind of respond to it in that moment or a week later, that type of thing, because there are so many little details that you don't think about, because we're also used to having our phones all day. So that was really important to us. And then in the rest of the presentation, I'm not sure if this gets shared with you. I have no problem with it being shared. But we have a bunch of resources. There are a lot of other states who have gone phone-free in schools, and there's many, many resources out there. So we don't feel like we're having to come up with something completely on our own. We can use what other schools have done and just kind of adapt it to what works for us. And sorry, one other thing. We were hoping to have another staff member here with us tonight. She actually spoke to a representative from Yonder Pouch. I'm not sure if any of you have heard of that, but essentially, it's a magnetic pouch that some schools are opting to use, where the phones go in the pouch for the day. It magnetically locks shut, so that way, you're kind of breaking the addiction cycle of constantly touching your phone, wanting to look at it, you know, was that lighting up in the corner type of thing? And she, we had two staff members who met with them, and I definitely think that that is a possibility. There is money attached to it, which is always complicated. So we, I feel like as a group and as a school, are committed to going bell-to-bell. But if there were funding ever available for something like Yonder, we feel like we definitely want to explore that option. I think that our school, we didn't get an exact quote, because they have to speak to an administrator to give us a number value, but it was something around, I think it was $30 a pouch. They last anywhere from two to four years, and they recommend buying, I think it was 15% over, just for inevitable, you know, the loss, the damage, that type of thing. So I don't know, I know it's something we are all interested in. We understand it comes with a big cost, but we were hoping if we were to get it, maybe it would be the type of thing that we would only need for three years, as we kind of phase out the kids who are used to having their phones. Because again, the ninth graders who come up from the middle school are very used to not having theirs. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because she wasn't able to be here tonight to speak about that.
I, so it's okay for me to put a copy of this into the board drive, so I will add
I noticed a couple of slides. The new law actually stipulates personal communication devices. Did you actually talk about other things or just cell phones?
So when we were talking about it, especially trying to make up our policy to go into our handbook, we talked about smartwatches, we talked about AirPods and earbuds and things like that as well. And we were including those into our policy, as they're just another additional layer of distraction. So we were thinking all personal devices. I think the book was very focused on cell phones. I think that's kind of where our initial thinking was, and that's, but definitely all personal devices.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Jim?
Yeah, so two questions, and I think one of them you may have answered by the pouch. But have you considered a, you know, in backpack but on, may not resolve everything because the buzz goes off? And now I'm distracted because I really want to know what that buzz was, right? In backpack and off may be the policy that you want to implement there, right? So that's kind of like, yeah, the first question.
Yeah, we have administrators behind us. I don't want to misspeak, but that, we have been talking about, that would be the rule. If they went to backpack, they need to be off.
And I guess the second question is, you know, there's an exception for those with, you know, I need my Bluetooth to manage my diabetes pump or, you know, the IEPs, those kind of things. So unfortunately, you know, how do you give a person a device and it's on, and it goes off with the buzz, but nobody else in the class has it? How do you anticipate those kind of, you know, you have the privilege of being ill and need a cellphone kind of questions coming up? You know, how do you manage that?
Yeah, that's definitely one of the things we've talked about. And we haven't come up with a firm system yet, but we've talked about whether we, you know, those students that have those needs are identified to us, so we would know who they are. But granted, like, I wouldn't necessarily know that, you know, Johnny needs his phone. We've talked about potentially providing even just a simple pouch that their phone goes into specifically, that's like, oh, if they have the yellow pouch, we know that they're actually been approved to have their phone. Or they have some sort of like badge that we give them that says, yes, they're approved. So somehow, allowing that student to give us kind of like a subtle but clear signal of I have, I do in fact have permission to have my phone for a necessary reason. So we have thought about it. We don't have a specific plan in place for that yet, but it is something that we have been aware of. And then also, knowing that there would be a limited amount of students that have that, it would be something that we would feel we can manage within that. I think currently, we, when we looked, we actually didn't have a single student at the high school who needed their phone for a medical device. So knowing that, we know that there are students in the district that do have that need, but the number is smaller, so we would know that, okay, there are a handful of kids.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. I'm curious, you mentioned headphones. And as we start to expand out to the number of devices that this applies to, I'm thinking about music. Surely, there are times in the school day when music is somewhat appropriate to a student's work. So how do you draw, if iPods are suddenly popular again, where do you, what do you guys think? I know it's important to students. What have you seen?
What we talked about was school-issued headphones in the Chromebook would be the allowed device at this time. So we have the, you know, not the AirPods they would use. If there was some reason that in class they needed to have, listen to music, you can listen to it on there, they can listen to it on their Chromebook. And we do have, we were saying, traditional headphones, because the AirPods have been quite challenging for teachers. But there's not a, I don't want to jump into another research situation, but there's not a lot of research that says listening to music while trying to do academic work is actually works, because it's really difficult to do two things at the same time, right? So I don't think it's going to be an issue for most of the classroom teachers.
I just wanted to add to that, though, that we have thought about like YouTube videos or something we utilize for instruction and stuff, and that would be the case where those school-issued headphones would be something that we could have, so a student could watch a video for instruction purposes and be able to listen to it and not, you know, everybody could be a different species. So we have talked about that.
Okay. So do students have the ability to put music on to their Chromebook?
They can't put music on their Chromebook. They can listen to music through like YouTube or something. Yeah, yes. Right.
Okay, so I mean, you.
They have access to music on their Chromebook. They can't physically put like, download songs onto their Chromebook.
Okay, I mean, YouTube is not exactly short of itself being a major point of distraction for myself included. So I guess that's not policed here, so we're not going to. But that would be the means with which they would be forced to.
Thinking as a high school student, are you guys going to honor this with reciprocity? And what's the policy for teachers and cell phones? Just curious, because I'm sure that would be the first thing.
Yeah. We've definitely talked about this at length. I feel like it gets brought up at every meeting, and I think we need to model the behavior that we want. And I think we need to model the behavior that we want to see. So I do feel like in general, staff tends to be better than teenagers. But I, we all need to make a conscious effort to, nope, my phone's staying in my desk or it's staying in my office, and I'm not using it around students. So I don't think, like, I don't know if we end up getting the Yonder pouches, if staff is also going to lock theirs away. Because I do think that there are some privileges that come with being a professional adult. But like I said, I, I really think that we need to model the behavior that we want to see from our students.
What's your understanding of how other districts have utilized the Yonder pouches? Like, do they, is, is, and I, I haven't researched them to the point where I know exactly how they work, but there's a locking mechanism on it. So is somebody at the district going to key it in and key it out at the beginning and end of every day to ensure that they're locked?
Yeah, so we, Principal McHale spoke with the principal at Stevens High School in Claremont. They currently are using Yonder pouches. And so, and then from our discussion with our, the representative for the area, every student would basically be managing their own Yonder pouch in the similar way that they manage their own Chromebook. They would be expected to have it with them. And how Stevens High School manages it is that they have to show that they have their Yonder pouch with them every single day when they walk into the building. So if there would be people at our entrances, like, yes, checking that you have your pouch. They then are locked, it's a magnet. And then with, I don't remember exactly how many pouches that each magnet unlocking system comes with. I think it, I think it was sixty pouches. Comes with one magnet to unlock those, the pouches. And then what they do is they attach those magnets at like points of entry and egress. And then at the end of the day, you kind of, they have this knob that you like attach to that hub. And then students just have to kind of tap their pouch and that unlocks their pouch for the day. Stevens High School said that the first few weeks, you do have to check, make sure every student has their pouch and it's locked in, that it's a kind of a process to get used to. And then slowly it becomes part of habit. And they said they personally don't police that it is in fact your phone inside your pouch. There are students who put fake phones or pieces of wood, they said, even in their pouches. But because the policy still is that there's like zero tolerance around having your phone, that's how they, they don't get into that power struggle as long as the pouch is present and there is no evidence that they're using their phone, then that is how they, they manage it. So it would take some getting used to, obviously. Our, like, people who are checking students out, if they have to leave early for a dentist appointment, they would, you know, be able to unlock their pouch if they're leaving at noon for the day or something like that. Or students that leave, have an early dismissal or a late arrival, that would be a process again at the front office. But it would be basically at the end of the day, everybody can kind of tap their pouch on their way out to unlock them.
Okay.
Can I ask another question? Clarifying question on the headphones. You, you, you guys distribute them on a, like, when they're supposed to be used? Or are they issued and they're carried around by students?
So we have a bunch left over from COVID. I don't know if anyone remembers, but during COVID, the school district ordered tons and tons and tons of headphones because so many kids were having to be home at the high school. It was every other week. So we have bunches still left over. So in my mind, in the library, so in my mind, what we would do is potentially give each classroom teacher a handful of those. That might be, you know, depending on exactly how this all turns out. Like, maybe that's a budgeting thing at the high school that we have to prepare for. You know, maybe each department budgets for a classroom set. And like, within that department, they manage it. I'm not exactly sure, but I know that we have a good amount in the library. I wouldn't say we have enough for every student to have their own issued one at the moment. But I think it's something that we could work towards. And like I said, at least put a couple in each classroom to start.
I guess I would follow up with a question to the policy committee as you guys look, look to this. I don't, to my mind, it doesn't seem to, musical devices don't seem to fall within the purview of personal communication devices. And headphones certainly aren't if it's not one way. So if they're not, if it's not a messaging device, I don't know how, you know, a policy could limit its usage. So I, I would ask around to see what other districts are doing. I don't know that like a ban on iPhones means you, you can't bring a musical device. You can't bring a Walkman or a Discman or an iPod in unless we're going out of the way to limit headphones, so.
Something, have to get clarification.
The Chromebook than there is about the headphones plugged into it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I would think YouTube would be a bigger distraction than a student having an iPod.
I've been teaching at the high school and going into my 10th year. And I've never had students ever need headphones or listen to music in class. So I, I don't know how big of an issue other, this is the first I've heard of that. Perhaps maybe at lunch or in the hallway, they would be able to use it. But in classroom, we're teaching, so there really isn't any time for that.
Well, I, I don't have, I don't have a high school age child. But I, I guess my line of questioning is coming out of the Concord Monitor reporting that had a roundtable of students that were discussing the implications. And I think every one of them mentioned their connection to music at some point during the day. So whether it was walking down the hall or working at a computer and wanting to listen to music. I know I listened to a lot of music when I was in high school.
I just was going to add, I think the reasoning behind us adding specifically AirPods, but also just earbuds in general is, I personally have had students answer their phones through their earbuds in the classroom before. And even though their phone's put away in their backpack, they still would be able to do that. I, I literally thought a student was talking to themselves in the corner and then realized they were talking on their phone. So I think that our, I don't know how we would be able to specifically police making sure every student's phone is off. I think that turns back into that policing part that we are really trying to avoid. So I think that was our purpose around the headphones is a lot of, you know, we have some very creative students with hoods and hair and like tucking things away so you don't know what they have access to. So I think that the thought of having them be over the, like, over the ear or corded headphones was specifically so that we knew that it maybe wasn't the same technology connection happening. Because though the headphones aren't the communication device, they connect to the communication device and allow phone calls and things to happen.
Yeah.
So I'm a principal of a high school, Fall Mountain. And we just went to no cell phones during class. We allow it during passing time and lunch. And we were worried about the same things. The, the headphones and the Chromebooks have been enough to satisfy the kids. They liked it, they liked it better than we expected. And we had fewer disciplined infractions all around because of it. It's been, it's been a really good move. And they, they did not fight it. They did not fight it very much. So I think they'll be more excited than you think because it's nice for them to, nice for them to step away from it. It feels like breathing fresh air.
Well, thank you very much. That was very informative and a lot of hard work, I'm sure. And I'm sure that the policy committee will be able to use a lot of that information as we go forward. So thank you very much.
Handbooks, I'm going to do handbooks, then I'll go back to monthly events. Handbooks, I have set up a folder inside the folder for your next meeting. So for the first meeting in August, now you have a folder in your drive with all the materials. I've put a folder in there. I've been up, I started to upload. I thought I would have them all done before tonight. I'm adding, I need to add one discriminatory, like discrimination notice at the beginning of the handbook. And I just ran out of time. So we'll get those all in there so that you have, you'll have between now and the August 6th. Is it August 6th? The first meeting in August to review the handbooks. The cell phone section, just know that since there are some unknowns with our policy, there may be further changes with that. I believe in the high school's handbook and in some of the hand, the handbooks that I've uploaded so far, I think they highlighted the cell phone section where any major changes, yellow. So if you've read them before, kind of significant changes should, will stand out to you. And then monthly events. Okay, no meeting, other meetings for the rest of this week, correct? Oh. Oh, right. That's right, I did know about that. Next week, we have Communications Committee is meeting on Tuesday at 6:00. Withdrawal Study Committee is meeting at, on Thursday at 6:00. And policy, a policy work session is happening, it's not on the calendar yet, is happening on Friday, the 25th at 1:30, is that correct?
Ian? Was there, can I ask anybody who was present at, or everybody who was present at the Withdrawal Study Meeting, when we scheduled the next one, had we done it for 6:30? Was I imagining that? It was odd, which is why I remembered that it may have happened.
I think because there was no SAC.
Because there was no SAC. I, I just wanted to be, nobody remembers, we'll just schedule it. But I didn't want to catch a selectman off guard.
So as we're checking that, let's go on to August. The first week in August, on Tuesday, the 5th?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so what's the, do we have an answer?
Withdraw, Withdrawal Study Committee at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, okay. The first week in August, we have a school board meeting on Tuesday, the 5th. And I don't have anything else for that week. On, before school board or a different night? Okay. The second week in August, the community forum is scheduled for Wednesday, the 13th at 7:00 PM. And that's the only thing I have for that week. That- People had to put their mics on. That may be hard for me, depending on what we're trying to get set up for the community forum. Okay, so Budget and Property is going to meet at 5:30 before the school board meeting on the 19th, correct? So during that week, that's, those are the only two meetings we have scheduled currently.
Two, well, definitely on the 28th and the 4th Thursday as we've been doing. I anticipate that the, we're not going to, during the subcommittee meeting, there's a lot on the agenda. We're not going to have answers to everything, but we'll have at least hopefully identified what we do need. So I would think a second subcommittee meeting would be needed. And I would think that either, that that would be probably likely happening on the 14th or the 2nd. But we can wait to discuss either as a subcommittee or as a full committee.
I was actually going to see if selectmen's advisory, just for September, could meet on the 21st, since the 28th is the first day of school for students. What did I say? Oh.
Moving withdrawal to the 21st is- Oh, SAC. Well, then there would be withdrawal as well. So I think the question you're asking about moving it because of the first day of school would apply to both committee meetings?
Yes.
So it works for me, I think. I think we can book it and bring it up if you can't. Yeah.
Okay. So we could, we could send out an email tomorrow, right? Just to- Okay, that's it? Great.
Okay, consent agenda. Oops.
So when, when's policy going to meet? Oh. Okay. I was looking at the wrong. Got it.
Forgetting if we had identified or targeted a date, day, week, or month to have a follow-up board goals session?
Not until-
Not, was that after the-
Administration is planning and presenting their goals at the first meeting in August.
Okay, consent agenda. Stipend formula?
I'll ju, um, can I?
Yep.
So in your packet, we brought forward the fall coaches that we have in place. There are still some open positions, but this time we, you'll see a column that we presented their stipend that they would have gotten during the 24, 25 school year, as well as the stipend that they're, the stipend that they'll be getting this year. So you'll see an increase. And I'll turn it over to Curtis to talk about the work he did with the group, coming up with a stipend formula.
Great, so you guys know that the CVA contract, the two-year contract that was passed, had allocations in each year for increases in stipends. Part of, within that contract was the agreement between the board and CVA to review how stipends are determined. So myself and Tom, representing the board, met with representatives of the CVA admin and Michael Hatfield of HR. We had three meetings. I think it was three, it might have been four. I think it was three. We met three, I think, I'm going to say three times. And we reviewed the rubric, which was in place to determine how every athletic stipend was issued. That in and of itself, obviously there were more, there was the athletic component and the co-curricular component to be determined. Our, the time we had, we did athletics. So this is a year one, year two piece in the contract to roughly $50,000 in each year in addition. So we basically had time to do a dive into the, the rubric used to determine athletic stipends. stipends. Um, what we came up with was uh four criteria, um, based on participation, um, the number of times a sport met, um, if they traveled, and the number of meets that they had. Um, and those four things, each getting a score, determined uh the level of pay that was given to the coaches. Um, we ended up with, uh, in our, I think in everyone's opinion, uh, with a scale that demonstrates greater parity between sports. And I think people were very happy with that um aspect. And you can see um head coaches for football and baseball, for instance, for last year were paid at different levels, and they're not. And one of the things that we dove into in terms of participation wasn't using just um convall numbers, but broader state historical averages of participation. And using those actually immediately um brought everything into a, a place where it passed the eyeball test very quickly. And just, it makes sense. So there's, there's more equality. Um, so we also uh agreed to next year, um, pick this up again and go back and look at the co-curricular piece of this and give a little bit more focus there. Um, Tom, would you like to add anything?
Just, I thought the process went very well. Uh, we had a lot of participation. We had the two principals from the middle schools. We had Larry, the athletic director. We had Greg representing the teachers. Um, and it just, a lot of, it's a lot more complicated than I imagined it was going to be, but I think the end result that we came up with was something that um everyone was happy with uh across the board. So I thought it was a really uh good use of our time, and and uh it's a big improvement over what existed.
Jim.
What's the approval process for this change to the contract for the board and the union? Do we need to vote on it? We need to vote on it?
Um, it was my understanding that, no, that it wasn't, that that was just my understanding that it was already agreed to and, um, but I'm not sure, Tom.
Yeah, we agreed on the amount and then how it was going to be distributed. I don't think that needed, that's not, you know, the total amount was, was the um, that was the negotiation part. The, and I think we had said we would meet together with the uh union, which we did, which Greg represented, but we also included administration. And I, so I personally don't think it's necessary. It wasn't, that's my memory.
Has it been signed by the union? Is it documented?
Well, I think as Tom said, I don't know that the allocation um of the funds uh needed specific board approval, like the stipend by stipend. If it does, then.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm not saying the board needs approval. I'm asking, who is, who has documented it?
I know Mike Hatfield has documented it.
Did he sign it? Did he sign it? Somebody from the union sign it? I should.
Can do that.
Or double check.
You know, find out, we have problems later if we didn't do that, so.
Okay.
I'd be interested in seeing a copy myself.
Sure.
Absolutely, that's one thing. It sounds like you guys did a lot of work, put a lot of effort into it because you took information from outside as well as internal data. I think it's important that we see that so that we can understand the actual stipend formula and, and make sure that we're applying it equally when it comes to co-curriculars and everything as well.
I agree. We'll look to share that.
Cap.
I just have a, a question. Um, I noticed that all of them went up except for golf, and I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a oversight because all of them end in really nice zeros except for the 75 cents, which drives me a little crazy. So I'm just checking, that's all.
I think that was one of the curious things um about this. I'm not going to speak directly to what, to, to that stipend because I don't know what its score on the rubric was, but prior to doing this, there were, um, I think some of the differences were kind of inexplicable. And that's why we wanted to review it. Um, so there were certain stipends that were could have been higher than, on a relative basis than another um stipend. So that was.
Okay. Anything else on the consent? Go ahead.
Uh, enrollment. So um you have a hard copy. I also put a copy into your, into the drive, but it is, I just wanted to explain a couple of things here. Just, um, if you look at AES, you'll see for grade one, you see 21 students and one teacher. For grade two, you see 24 students and one teacher, and then you see grade one, two with a to-be-determined. So we have three teachers. Um, so some of those first graders and some of those second graders will actually be moved into that grade one, two class that just isn't completed yet. Um, you'll see, um, I think AES is pretty self-explanatory. If you go down to DCS, you'll see grades K1, two, um, and the number of teachers is 2.25. That doesn't, so if you think back to Jessica's presentation, that doesn't mean that all of those students are going to be in one class together. They're doing some content specialization. Um, and so there's 2.25, and the 0.25 is Nicole Pease is a teaching principal. So a quarter per day will be um spent supporting the K1, two, and a quarter per day will be spent um supporting three, four. Um, and then I included off to the side the recommended class size guidelines, and underneath that you'll see analysis, and I just realized it got um cut off. But for elementary, right now, 38% of our K to four classes are within the recommended guidelines, and 62% of the classes are still lower. Their numbers are lower, sometimes even by one student, but they're lower than our recommended class size guidelines. Um, it's, these numbers are as of today. Um, we have kids registering every single day, so we expect them to change between now and the beginning of the year. But these are the things that we're looking at right now. We're watching the numbers, we're thinking about, we're looking at class size, we're looking at groupings. Um, and on the back of that, this sheet, you'll see um the breakdown for uh middle school. And 39% of those classes are within size guidelines, and 61% are lower than the recommended class size guidelines.
Jim.
When I first looked at this, it's changed from previous month to minus 44 through immediate questions, and I think you answered part of it, but I hope, when do you expect to settle down as one question? And how about the impact of the freedom of, of freedom, uh, school funding, the tuition for my student?
Um.
Have you seen all that yet, or still happening?
It's, I, I think, well, I would just end up giving my person, I, I, I don't know if we're going to see a huge impact of the expansion of EFAs. I would guess that the expansion is going to be families that already have their kids at public, at a private school that can now tap into them. But.
I mean, all the, all the publicity around the EFAs, um, the research that was done by all the different people says that um currently 90% of the people that are on EFAs didn't go to public school to begin with. So if that trend keeps going, then um probably we won't see a, a great change in enrollment.
Know of any specific losses?
Um, EFAs I'd have to look into before I gave a number. I think, I can say for Lionheart, I think we have 90, 90-something students from our district K to 12. Oh, well, they don't serve K to 12, but we, we have.
Yeah.
So that was a, a question I had was um, how much of it is just difference between graduating class and incoming classes, and how much of it is due to departing either the district entirely or deciding to school in another manner?
Um, I, I think the big difference you're seeing is I'm comparing it against the, just the June student enrollment. That was the last numbers that you saw. So at this point, I would credit that the most, right? Because, and we're, and the fact that we're mid-July. Well, especially kindergartners, we'll continue to get kindergartners to register between now and the beginning of the school year. So.
These numbers hold, we're down 37 students year to year.
It really becomes August before people remember, oh, um, school's going to start before too long. I need to make sure that I register my child's.
I can attribute the, the minus 34 in PK to order, but I can't attribute the minus 13.
No, not for, well, yeah. Okay, and I, I, um, Lionheart is, if you've seen that, they are expanding and new building and adding grades, so, okay.
Well said.
I just wanted. But I'm, I'm just looking at um our grade 12 students. Last year that exited is 157, and the incoming grade eight class, which will be the ninth graders, is smaller than that. That looks like 130, so.
Okay, full business, Janine?
We have two policies up for a second read. Um, the first is uh policy JFAB, admission and tuition of non-resident students. And as I said earlier, um, the board feedback has been incorporated.
Move to accept policy JFAB.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Next one, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, the second policy we have for second read is policy JLP, parental notification of and involvement in student welfare. And again, the board, uh, the board feedback was incorporated here, too.
Okay, we have a motion.
Move to adopt policy JLP. And I just want to say on this one that we're likely to be revisiting it because there is a new.
Yes.
Parental notification law. So, you know, this is.
Yes.
This is what it is for, until we, we hit that, and that'll be high on our agenda.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Yeah, that's why, I was confused by that, too. Did we, no, okay. That's good for a first read.
Okay. Um, donation um to Pierce School is um a ball pit for $1,500 from Trevor Hunt, I guess. Um, can I have a motion to accept that?
Move to accept the Gaga Ball Pit from Trevor Hunt to the Pierce School with gratitude.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. I guess we don't have to ask about public comment. Fund balance, excuse me.
Um, Jim, Jim really referenced it, but we ended the year in a, in a good place. Um, the auditors are actually in at the end of this month, and probably at the second meeting in August, we'll come with the, the final numbers, and you can decide on retention and that. But um, we did end largely where we told you that we would end, and we did, so that's good.
Awesome. And we'll get our checks soon. Brenda, I knew I could count on you. To stay out, and Alice Lewis. Yeah.
All right, we do have need for a very short non-public session. Yeah. So I have a motion to go into non-public session for um RSA 91A32C.
Personal reputation.
Yep.
So. Tom, yes?
Oh, yes.
Uh, Janine, yes?
Mike, yes.